Thanks, everybody. Sorry for the delay. I'd like to call to order the January 10th, 2023 meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board. All those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you and welcome. Mary, will you please do the roll call vote? Or excuse me, the roll, roll call, not voting.
Maderas.
Here.
Petway.
Here.
Hool.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Granland.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Superintendent Stenbik.
Here.
Great. Thank you. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We'll start first with our agenda approval adjustments, announcements, and correspondence, starting with our approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mary in the second.
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our announcements. On January 16th, which is a Monday, there will be no school. On January 17th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there's a school board work session here in the community room. On January 24th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's a regular school board meeting here in the community room. On January 30th, there is no school. That's also a Monday. And on February 14th, we all get to spend Valentine's Day together here at 7:00 PM for a regular school board meeting in the community room. Next, we'll move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, is there any correspondence?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the citizen and employee representatives. Any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Perfect. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank our representatives for 710 for sharing their information with us. Next, we will move on to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda includes our personnel report from January 10th, 2023, and our school board minutes from 12:13, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Laura, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? All right. No discussion. We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Well, next, we'll move on to discussion reports and information items, and we'll start with reports from members of the board. And we will start with Laura.
I had a feeling it was going to be me this week. Okay, I don't have a, I don't have a lot to, to report. I did attend the organizational meeting last week, and then I had a wonderful conversation with Julie. Thank you very much for your time and the chair meeting prior to this meeting.
Great. Thank you. Mary?
Yes. Well, I also attended the organizational meeting last week, the policy meeting right before this one. And in the meantime, I had conversations with members Maderas and members, and member Petway.
Great. Thank you. And so now, we do have our three new board members, so I'm going to call on each one of you next. And this is a time where you would share with us, you know, board business, that you had conversations, you know, things that you may have attended as a member of the school board outside of what you're doing here in this room. So you will all mention that you were at the organizational meeting last week. And then if there's any conversation you've had, or if you've had conversations with community members, that sort of thing. So Jessica, I'll start with you.
Sure. Well, I will make the requisite report that I attended the organizational meeting last week. And like the other new members, I'm sure have been doing, getting myself acclimated to everything related to being a board member and board book in the process for meetings. I also participated in Phase 1 and 2, the first three trainings through the Minnesota School Board Association, their trainings for new members. And I had conversations with Chair Mueller and Member Granland.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yay. I too was at the organizational meeting last week. I had a conversation with, let's say, board member, member?
Use it, member.
Member, Member Granland?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I have to get used to that. And I am planning on having bigger conversations with her as my mentor. I also didn't attend, so it wouldn't be public, but they actually meet over Zoom if you want to attend. But the City of Columbia Heights had their meeting yesterday. But I did look up their agenda in minutes, so I did review that. And I also have been updating my board member info and doing all the same new board member things that I'm supposed to do.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Julie?
I too attended the organizational meeting and the policy meeting prior to this. I have talked with Member Palmer as my mentor, just to kind of touch base. And I was out at the MSBA site trying to find, you know, the trainings and such, and noted that I will not be able to go to the leadership conference. So it's just, it conflicts with a lot of work right now. So that's pretty much all I've done this last week.
Thank you. Yes, that's a lot in your first week.
It is.
So don't, don't just. So, yeah, great. Thank you. For my report, I also attended the organizational meeting with all of you, had a conversation with Member Palmer and with Member Maderas, as well as several conversations with Superintendent Stenbik. I attended the Subcommittee on Policy prior to this meeting, as well as the chair meeting. Also, I had an exceptional meeting with the City of Columbia Heights and our police department. Superintendent and Stenbik and I, I had asked for that meeting to, to have some conversations about our school resource officer contract. And so, we had a meeting with Superintendent Stenbik and I, and Director Hennekenz was there as well, Chief Austin, Captain Markham, City Administrator Kelly Boujot, and our Mayor Amada Simula Marquez?
Marquez Simula.
Thank you. I was drawing a blank there for a minute. Really good conversation going over the contract, talking about updating it for the next term, looking at making it more conducive to what's happening in terms of our relationship with our, our officers. It's kind of like five documents hodgepodge together right now, so we really talked about that. We will be coming to the board with more on that during a work session. But really a great meeting to start with, and then each group taking the contract back to make it a kind of more of a working document. So really, Superintendent Stenbik, I'm sure will add some things as well. Feel really positive after that meeting that we can really look at that and that relationship and, and make the contract what it, what it should be for us. So Superintendent Stenbik, do you have a report for us?
I do. Last week, we endured a very large snowstorm, and I just wanted to say that I'm really proud of the staff and the teachers and parents and families who transitioned to e-learning. And we had very strong attendance, and we were really prepared in advance from that. So thank you all for that. I know it's never learning, or you're never easy to transition and make those decisions either. Also, last week, Member Granland and I attended the Association of Metropolitan, yep, Association of Metropolitan School Districts, where we heard from the governor and the lieutenant governor, and also a panel of legislators. There were also presentations outlining the platform for AMSD for the 2023 session. Executive Director Niemboi and I have already visited three schools this week, and we love to get out there and really appreciate seeing our students and staff in action. And as Chair Mueller mentioned, along with Director Hennekenz, the mayor, city manager, chief of police, and captain of police met regarding our working relationship. I had conversations with Chair Mueller, Vice Chair Palmer, and Member Granland. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I would like to thank Mary, who just let me know that I skipped Laura. So can we have Laura give a report?
I skipped the report first.
Oh.
You went first?
Sorry. That's what I thought. Okay.
Sorry.
I'm not losing my mind. Thank you.
I apologize. Nothing has changed since my last report.
It's here for all of us. It's like it's our first real meeting or something. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Mary. And thank you, Superintendent Stenbik. Next, we have Executive Director Niemboi to talk about our REACH program.
Thank you. I'll stay. I came to download my presentation because I forgot to load it up. So if... Bear with me.
No problem. We're going to get all the kinks outworked in this, all the kinks worked out in this meeting.
tonight to give you a brief update on our REACH program. I know we have two new board members, and so part of my presentation will be an overview of the REACH program, and then I will give you specific details, actually, three new board members, I'm sorry.
We're all doing it.
I'm hiding over here.
Yeah. We should have put you here. And so then I'll give you some specific details that, of the events that we're doing to engage our families because of the influx of new families that we are experiencing in our district. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong and all succeed. You know, since we're talking about community core values, community excellence, I mean, literally, all of them. When we care about our families, we really want to do our best. So all the, these core values will be incorporated in my presentation. This is an informational session and no governance questions. And first, things first, in August, the superintendent has set forth some commitment for the year 2023, and you can see them all on the screen. But I'm only going to focus on the community aspect of this. You've probably seen this, a beautiful figure. So the REACH program is a wonderful program that was instituted in Columbia Heights many years ago to meet the needs of parents who are new to the district so that they can become acclimated to our school district. And REACH is a program that came out of California, used to be called PK, Parent Institute for Quality Education. We created our own acronym in Columbia Heights Public Schools, and I'll give you the definition for it in a little bit. So the program itself is usually offered in the afternoon, and we invite parents to start coming about 5:00 and 5:30. We kick off the program by serving a dinner, and then classes begin at 6:00. And then we do two hours of class session. And typically, it's a six-week program that takes place right here at the district center and sometimes in the schools. We often divide it in elementary school and the secondary school. And it's really engaging, granted the parents to come at the school where their children are attending. Last year, we were doing it at Highland for the elementaries. We did a session at the high school and a session at the middle school because we were again getting a lot of interest to engage our parents. One of the beauties of the program is that there is childcare. So it relieves that, not burden, but that responsibility from parents so they can be focused on learning. And then we provide a transportation, which is always a barrier for many families to attend events. And then the culmination of that six-week program of learning is graduation ceremony. And it's amazing to see some of the pictures from graduation. And specifically, 13 years ago is when REACH was implemented in Columbia Heights. So the REACH program is successful because of our homeschool liaison. So at each of our schools, our five schools, there is a homeschool liaison. These homeschool liaisons all speak Spanish, but they serve all families, not just Spanish families. And they, they, they meet before, the week before the session, they plan the session, they talk about facilitation, and they update the PowerPoints, and they do a great job at, at preparing. And then, at the end of the program, there is a final evaluation so that we can see how well we serve our families. We also use volunteers. We have students from our, the web leaders, or the link crew, or the National Society come and participate to get their community service hours for volunteering. We also use some of our employees or coordinators who choose to come and support the planning and the day of the events, playing with the children. And, and so, it's really that sense of community that we build through the REACH program. And so, you're probably thinking, what does REACH stand for? Realizing Educational Achievement in Columbia Heights. That's what REACH stands for. And so, there is a curriculum that was adopted from the California, but updated and revised to meet the local requirements and, and programs that we offer. So you can see elementary school has its own curriculum. The first session talks about establishing the collaboration between home and school and community. We value that because some of our parents are immigrants, and learning what's in the community is imperative for them to have the services that they need, the support that they need to know that are available so that they can help their children. And then, when parent, school, and the community connect, you know that student learning increases. And so, the middle school has its curriculum, and their second session is always about connecting academic success and positive self-esteem. So you see, it touches on the social-emotional learning aspect of it, not just the academic learning. And then the high school tend to have a focus about college going. And by college, we mean post-secondary, whether it's a trades or whether it's a four-year college, a two-year college. And we talk about the importance of identifying classes so that when you're a senior, you can graduate and you can go on. And so, the list goes on, but the curriculum is always updated every year when you're on this program. So that's REACH in a nutshell. A support network for parents to get to know each other, to receive support from the district free of charge to the parents by the cost to the district. And so, this year, we've seen a consistent increase of parent, every week we're enrolling new parents. And so, in conversation, we decided that we needed to repeat the same program. Unfortunately, funding is an issue, so we had to modify how we serve our parents. But we've remained true to providing support and resources in a modified way with the limited funds that we have. And so, the first session that we did this year was on academics and technology. Why? I think you know the answer, as we've come from the pandemic. And at that session, we had 74 parents who registered because we still tried to provide light refreshments. And so, 74 people registered to come, but 73 showed up. Not bad, right? So, but then we had financial late night. This was a partnership. Because remember, I said the homeschool liaison in each schools. So the high school was running a financial late night. Instead of us having our own program here, all the homeschool liaison went to support at the high school with translation for parents who speak a different language. And so, Mr. Miller reported to me that 283 people registered, meaning they sent invitation to all the seniors. But when it was time to come, I think there was about 60 or 80 students who came, and then the rest were parents. So that's that 140 number that you're seeing. There was a combination of parents and students. And then, our brilliant homeschool liaison, I mean, they're amazing. I think each of your, of your school that you represent, go talk to those homeschool liaisons. They're just supportive and caring. They, we meet monthly. So I meet with them monthly to talk about the progress of their work, and how we're supporting families, and what needs are arising. And they said, let's do a resource fair. I say, a resource fair? That takes a long time. I say, when do you want to do it? They say, in three weeks. You know, administrators, we like to plan a lot in advance, but they convinced me to do it. And it was amazing. It took place in this room, outside there in the training room. Again, they wanted to get a confirmation. 97 parents said they were going to come. By the time it was all said and done, we had 276 parents. And it was beautiful. We, we invited community-based organizations, whether it's the YMCA, whether it's Anoka County, whether it's a public library, whether it's the city and the police department and SECA, I mean, all these beautiful community-based organizations came. We were expecting only six, and we ended up with 29 community-based organizations. So again, kudos to my colleagues, homeschool and cultural liaison, because they did an outstanding job for our families. And as a result of that, there are new things that emerged. Parents wanted English classes, and we're doing some searching to be able to support them. And so, in total, in a brief period of about two months, we've served 489 new families into the district, and that's encouraging. So there are future sessions that we're planning. As a result of that increase, you see a lot of TBDs and some dates. We've planned them out, and now we're looking for space available. That's why we haven't put the dates there, but we've identified the space, and we're just trying to make sure it's open when we do that. You are more than welcome to attend and see how the REACH training are done. And some of the suggested topics are the ones you see here. So technology again, because every week, we see and we enroll at least, at least, I'm saying, seven new students. So these are families. And so, we're going to run these three sessions, three weeks at a time, so that all the new families who come, we can support them, and they can get to experience what others already know about the school district. And so, mental health support is another one. College fair is another big one. So, I mean, this homeschool liaison just likes to do things big. So we're going to have a college fair where we're inviting four-year colleges, two-year colleges, and three-year programs. So all these support networks from colleges. And that date has been set, it's February 23rd, and it's going to be again here in the family centers. So you're invited to come and see how our families are learning about those post-secondary options. And then, we decided to do this monthly family onboarding. Because if you're new to a community, you're new to a school district, it really helps when you know where the resources are. And so, that's what we're going to do. These pictures are evidence of what happened in this room on that very night of November 11th, I think was the date. And you can see all the happy families connecting, finding resources, whether it's childcare, whether it's daycare, with knowing, you know, the basic necessities that families who are new to a community will need. And it was great. So what do REACH parents say? You know, these parents come, they're excited, and they, many of them want English classes offered. I don't know if you know this, but it's full in community ed, in terms of adult basic education. Thank you. It's full. And so, we're trying to find other ways to provide English classes onsite with the assistance of ABE. So they also say our children need to learn English. So they want the same thing, the best thing for their children. And so, as a district, we are committed to providing those services within the school day with our gen ed teacher, and our EL teachers, and even after school. And so, if you know people who want to teach ESL classes after school, please let me know because it's hard for them to come by, and yet we have those needs. They also say, when will you offer a similar program? So they get excited about it, and they want to continue to come. And finally, they're grateful for the homeschool liaison, where the teachers who support them and welcome them in this community. So some program outcome, the REACH program in itself has a 21-point checklist, and I give some of the examples of what parents walk away with. So they are able to know what a GPA is, they are able to know how to go and talk to their children's teacher, and they are able to visit a college or university, and so they can continue to have those conversations with their children at home. And then, they finally understand the way the school system works. So that's the intent of REACH, and that's why we do REACH, and that's why we offer this program for parents. So the return on investment, you know, for us, we want to see all our parents 100% satisfied. We want to see all our parents continue to see and to show interest in programs that we're offering. And we want to see all their children engage during the school day, as well as in after-school program. I think I said this earlier, what makes REACH possible is parents' ability to know that there is food served, where they don't have to cook dinner at home, there is childcare provided, there is transportation, and there is some learning content that are beneficial to them. And then, we have homeschool liaison who care dearly about making sure that all our new families in the district understand where to find the services. I conclude my presentation there. These are some additional pictures from last year and this year REACH program. And if you have any questions, I'll take them.
Great. Thank you, Director Niemboi. Any questions?
I just have a comment. I, I cannot believe how much this program has grown. I am really impressed. It's almost like it's, it's its own school. So I really look forward just to, to hearing about the reports of some of those other, like the mental health and, and so on, those different seminars going, how well they're attended, and what we can do to support our parents better. Thank you.
I have a question. You had made a comment about funding. How is this funded right now? And what sort of supports are you, are we going to need to continue to support this program and also continue to, to grow it?
So during the pandemic, we were fortunate to receive additional funding from the Department of Education to support parents. So that's why we ran it as comprehensively as we did. This year, we received an additional $40,000 for all the five schools through Title III Part A to serve families who have been in the country three or less years. Those families who qualify as immigrants, not just English language learners. And so, a portion of that $40,000 is supporting this component of family literacy engagement, not the whole $40,000. And then, there is, you know, remnants that we can find from some of our budgets that we're using to provide those light refreshments. Because we also have Title I, and this is considered parent engagement activity. So that's the other funding portion.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are they limited to the amount of courses they can take? Like, if a family took one this year, could they take the same course next year?
Yes. If they want to come back, they can come back again.
Okay.
And we've seen, when we see repeated families, we start diversifying the themes so that they're getting something more as opposed to getting the same.
Okay. Gotcha. Thanks.
Great question.
So I have a question on the homeschool liaison. So I'm assuming those are families that homeschool and use the services of the, of the public school district? Is that correct?
No. So
I'm trying to understand that.
The title is homeschool liaison. So these are district employees who work and support the school, connect the schools to the families. And these are families who are residents of the district. So their title can be misleading. It's homeschool liaison.
I'd be the homeschool liaison through.
Yeah. I just didn't understand it. So I wanted to make sure, because I know we're homeschooling.
Right.
Yes.
Think of it as home-to-school liaison.
I can totally see where you're.
Yeah.
Great question.
Definitely got it, too.
Jessica?
You had mentioned sort of helping families gain familiarity with the higher education system and prepare for college visits, which I think is great. I'm just wondering, is there anything within the program that helps facilitate college visits or make connections with college visit opportunities that are already present elsewhere, you know, within our high school?
That's a great question. From the REACH point of view, we help parents to just get that access, see it, know it, learn about it, and go to the conversation. The high school offers connections, college visits for all our students. Yes, they do that. Because I think the high school also offers that FAFSA night and scholarship night where they talk about the resources that are available.
Thank you. So it sounds kind of like, in some ways, a bridge to help families gain that knowledge in order to be able to participate more effectively in those programs that already exist.
You are correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then I, I didn't have another question, but I think just a comment. I would echo what Member Palmer had said about, you know, I would echo what Member Palmer had said about, you know, being thrilled about the way this program has been able to expand. And I just want to extend kudos for finding creative ways within the funding structure that we have in order to scale some of these opportunities. And a couple of things that really stand out to me about this program in terms of really facilitating better engagement with families. You had emphasized some of those things, but I think looking at the success of this program and our ability within the funding structure to provide childcare, to provide transportation, to provide meals, that that is such a support for allowing families to engage, which you can see in the numbers of families that have been able to participate. And so I know we can't always do that within the programming that we offer through our district, but I think this is just a great example of when we can break some of those barriers down that allow people to get out to the schools and fully engage with learning about our school system and what their students are involved with, that that really goes a long ways. So I think a great example of that as well. And then I also just wanted to just emphasize the request from some of the parents for English support. And I'm glad to hear, because that was a question I had when I was looking at the board materials about, you know, what was really available for families. So I'm glad that the district is finding ways to sort of meet that need beyond what's available in capacity in adult basic education. So thank you for sharing that information as well. I think the district is well-positioned for that. So overall, great program. Thank you very much.
You are welcome. And I mean, for those in the community who are watching, our community-based partnerships are strong. One of the community-based organizations that was here volunteered to start offering free English classes. And so we're in communication with them. And I think the location, it will be North Park, so. And Principal Sasek is supporting that. So a lot of good came out of that community resource fair, so thank you for noticing.
That's terrific. Thank you.
And I have to say, REACH was Superintendent Stenvik's brainchild. And so we're just continuing the good work that has been done in the district.
Long time ago.
And I would also like to say, just if you could pass on our appreciation to the homeschool cultural liaisons and really looking at their innovation for what they've done and what they've put together. And like Jessica said, and Mary too, it's a limited funding, that there is, we're serving a lot of people. And that goes to their passion and their commitment to education for the whole family. So please share our appreciation for the hard work they're doing.
I will do that.
Any other questions?
I do have one more small.
Yes.
Are you finding that there's a need maybe during the courses that you need to implement more courses for different languages too, as well as the Spanish?
Yes. Yeah, because, you know, Spanish is the number-one population that we serve, but we also have other languages that have the same needs, and yes.
Are you looking to find those too? Or like right now, would Spanish just be the main one that you would focus on still?
No, as I say, one of the homeschool liaison was actually emphatic about, you know, diversifying it and making it known to other parents that it's not just Spanish, it's English and the others. So we are, we, as a district, we have three different agencies that provide interpreting services.
Okay.
So we can use those when we invite families who are non-Latin, non-Spanish speaking.
Yeah. Okay.
Super talented.
Just to add a little historical context, originally with REACH, we did offer it, we offered courses in English, courses in Spanish. There were a couple of years where we targeted African-American or BIPOC parents as well. And then this year, Executive Director Niamh Way and I have met with members from the Somali community. And they've asked us to have another meeting and have more meetings. And so we're definitely exploring that avenue, particularly with our Somali community right now.
Yeah, that's great.
Because we, there are 33 languages spoken in our schools?
We're up to 38, correct?
Okay.
38 different languages, yeah.
No, that's a lot. Wow. Yeah, yeah. No, that's great. That's awesome.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Director Nembway.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Director Bennett and Director Hennigens for our discontinuance of programs and positions resolution.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. Annually, both Director Hennigens and I come forward with this resolution. And it's a resolution which the school district, school board, asks administration and the superintendent to start looking at efficiencies for positions, programs, to help effectuate economies of the school district and help balance the school district budget. So this really starts our annual staffing process. So in your packet was the resolution that will be brought forward at the next meeting for approval. And so tonight, I'm just here to answer any questions, and I'll be back in two weeks seeking approval.
Thank you, Director Bennett. And I'll make one comment before I ask for questions, that this is something that's done annually. The board has a board policy in terms of what our fund balance needs to be, kind of how we balance the budget and how we spend our funds. And so in order to be mindful of that and our spending, we every year ask the administration to look at ways that we can be more efficient if there are cost savings out there. So looking at trying to continue to provide the exceptional programs that we provide to keep our staffing, class sizes, all of those things, but taking everything into consideration, and at the end of the day, we have a budget to balance and not an infinite amount of dollars to manage. So that's what this is, is it's not, we're not saying go cut things. We're saying, can you take a look and see where we're out there? Look at who's retiring, what, you know, programs are, you know, not required or needed or not popular, you know, whatnot? And are there ways that we can just make the budget, you know, balance a little bit better through those efficiencies? So that's what this resolution is for us directing the administration to start that process. So with that, any questions or comments?
I have a question. I'm wondering if you can just tell us a little bit more about the timeline of making these recommendations to the board and a little bit about sort of what the public who might be observing would expect to see or not see as part of that process.
So you're talking about like the staffing process as we go forward?
Well, this is a part of, right, that annual staff, the staffing process? And so, yeah, I guess just generally this kicks that off. So what does that, what does that timeline look like?
Usually what the timeline looks like is we get the resolution passed, and then the superintendent, along with administrators and principals, we start meeting many, many times a week and looking at class sizes. We try to stay 24 to 1 in the elementaries and 30 to 1 in the secondary. So looking to see if, you know, good examples, does one course that we offer, just we're not getting any kids to take it, we don't have to offer it. Maybe that's the way we suspend it for a year and then move forward with a different offering or no offering. We also, part of it is looking at, you know, how many fourth graders are going to be fifth graders? How many fifth graders are going to the middle school? And where the kids are going to end up? We also look at registration from the high school and middle school. I don't know, Superintendent Stenvik, am I missing something? But it just really is a time for us to look to see, I guess, where the positions are, where the people are. I don't know if there's something I'm missing there.
Since I started in this role and collaborating with Director Bennett, we together have brought forward to the community or and/or to staff different programs or, you know, wanting to hear from staff and hear from the community about different programs that we're, that we might consider if we were to have to completely eliminate a program. We have found it in the past very painful to make that more of a surprise. And so we, we really try to be transparent and provide the why for, you know, what the rationale would be. And then with most of our efficiencies or, you know, or all of our efficiencies when we're seeking them, we're looking to make those efficiencies as far away from the classroom as possible. I think that's everything.
And Director Bennett, can you, I know we'll talk about this a little bit later in the year, but maybe for our new board members so that they can kind of understand the timing, like Jessica had mentioned. Talk about what's required in the, in the contracts that we have in terms of notices if we are going to, you know, eliminate a person or position, what that, what that timeline is.
Yes, so I guess we have an internal staffing timeline that we use. But some of the big dates are if we have a teacher that has tenure, there's an April 1 notification date, and we have to get the process started early enough so that if we do have to put them on unrequest leave of absence, it's done before. Our contract has June 1st, but the statute's July 1st. So usually we have to let teachers know by June 1st what their assignment is for the next school year. We have to let education assistants know by the end of the school year if they have a position for the following school year. Clerical have to have their calendars and know if they have a position by the end of the school year. And then we also tell the principals to have their building staff by the end of June so that when they leave for the month of July, buildings are staffed and ready to go. The big one is we want to, if we have an unrequest leave of absence, that has an unrequest leave of absence hearing, which involves 15 days that they can request the hearing. And we have to get a hearing judge. So there's that piece of it. And then on top of it, we, Superintendent Stenvik said, we really do try to make, keep the cuts away from the classrooms as much as possible. And there are some times we get to the end and we think we have it, and then somebody ends up retiring or they resign. And we save some monies, we're able to save somebody else back, or somebody decides to take a leave for the next school year, then we can call somebody else back. So we try to keep it very confidential, the names until the end, just in case we can save somebody's position. We try to be as transparent as possible, given the constraints of, you know, we just don't want people wondering if they have a job or not have a job. We try to really keep them going and let them know as we go. And we also do, I was going to say, we do two resolutions. So usually we do, we do one resolution that'll be the non-renewals of teachers who are a Tier 1, which by law we have to non-renew because it's just a one-year license. Tier 2 expiring if they're a long-term sub. So under Superintendent Stenvik's guidance, we've done that one a little bit earlier so that we can either hire the staff back, or they know, like, I do not have a position for next school year. Some of them are people that just are not cutting it in the classroom. Let them know now, so they can go find another position. And then by the second one, it's like, we've tried to hold on to you, we just don't have a spot for you right now.
Mary?
I was going to say, I'm glad you said that, because I know that over the past few years, we have adjusted it. And it has been, at least feedback that I've heard and that I think you've shared too, is that staff appreciate that additional time and some of that additional information in terms of, it's not, you know, they, they wake up and all of a sudden, like, this is a thing that's happened, is sort of how I think it felt, at least for community members. And, but it feels a lot, I think, more supportive in the way that it's been done since this changed, so.
I just wanted to add that oftentimes, community members and parents want to know what the cuts are going to be. And I'm committed to making sure that our, if we have to cut a staff person, that they actually get to know first. And I will not publicize it until we're actually able to make that decision and connect with an actual staff person before going public with it.
I think it was two years ago, I was going to say, not a lot of districts, the superintendent and myself met with some of the staff who were being affected. So not a lot of districts have the superintendent meeting directly with staff, but we wanted it delivered from us so they weren't hearing, you know, at the school board meeting or through the rumor mill, just some program changes that would affect their positions.
Thank you. Any other questions?
This is maybe more of a question for Superintendent Stenvik, but just thinking about how the timing of this process sort of aligns with legislative session and knowing that this is a budget year and we might not know till, you know, pretty late in the spring, how our funding at the state level is going to impact the district. I guess the question is, you know, how do, how do, how do you move this process forward knowing that it could change a lot based on state funding and how do those things work together?
Thank you for that question. It really is, it really is a challenge. And this is something that we, like through AMSD representatives and, you know, when, when I'm out there talking to legislators and when I get a chance to meet with the governor, that's something that we push, all of the superintendents in the metro area push, that we need to know earlier. We can't not wait until the end of May to understand what our budget is going to be starting July 1st. Because, you know, these are people's lives, their livelihood, their families, and our organization. So we, if anyone would like to encourage their local representative to make some of those decisions as early as possible, it does help. Thank you.
I would just say, I was going to say that too. At AMSD, they were told, our legislators, and I believe the governor was there at that point, that this, this needs to be done far earlier. And they got that message from the, from AMSD. And that's going to be, I think, part of the push moving forward is that that's not, it's not fair to wait. So, yeah.
Thank you. Director Bennett will be back on January 24th seeking our approval of the resolution to start looking for those efficiencies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Director Hennigens and the Columbia Academy Kitchen Serving Area.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. Share my presentation here. Okay. So the Columbia Heights, Columbia Academy Kitchen Serving Area Project. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values, community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, aligning with the CHPS Board of Education equity statement. So this is an informational item, I know it's board granted tonight, but this will be brought to the board for approval as an action item on the January 24th regular school board meeting. So I didn't include a picture of before. This is Columbia Academy, currently called Central Cafe. And it has an awning in the center that's a very weird color. It's one of our biggest issues at all of our, our buildings. It's varying stages of upgrades that have happened within the kitchen serving areas over time. And a big part of that is just, you know, funding available. We currently do have a very healthy balance in our food service fund. Food service fund is completely separate from our general fund. And food service fund can't pay for things outside of, you know, that direct food service and feeding the kids. In particular, within the cafeteria serving area, kitchen area, these funds can really only affect the kitchen and serving area. And it can't really pay for things within the cafeteria with the exception of maybe some signage that goes along with the serving of the food. So as we look at it, as we looked at the project before we started with any of the, any of this conversation, we worked with an organization called ATSRR, Armstrong, Torseth, Scold, and Rydean, Inc. We did a full study of all five of our sites. And the kitchens, the serving area, and the cafeteria was included in that conversation and talked about overall space, square footage, deficiencies, whether there are code deficiencies, you know, because we're, we have old buildings, things have been grandfathered in. And as we start to look at redoing areas of our kitchens, our serving areas, bringing things up to code, lighting that may be sufficient, but maybe to meet code, but maybe not really sufficient for overall proper lighting, you know, different equipment that's aging, serving lines that are aging. I just looked at it across the district and looked at, you know, the real, the basics of what each kitchen and serving area needs to more of a larger encompassing, kind of a remodel of that space to really fit the needs of our current food service programming and feeding our students. And so looking at it from the Columbia Academy perspective, it's one of the, one of the buildings that has had really the least amount of done to it over the time, over recent history, the last 20-plus years. Maybe 30 or 40, I don't know, but it's, it's been quite a while. And so in looking at that, we really focusing on that, on that building. And again, we're using these food service funds, which it does have a healthy balance. And looking at it both from a hot serving and cold serving and, you know, how many lines can we, can we get in, through at a time? Currently, we have two. You know, we really like to have found a way to get three, but we really were able to get a more customized look at two lines going through that could speed up the process and flow a little bit better and really separate that. So really what we're doing is these bump outs here are actually on the other side. They're half-walk. is these bump outs here are actually on the other side, they're half walls, and this is glass. Up here are Plexi, up here Shield. And it's the cold serving area. So the kids will still come through the lines. They'll go through either this doorway to the far left, or they'll go through this cage, which will be up for the cold and the, and the doorway for the hot. And so each side will divvy up into two lines. If you're just getting cold, then you can go through that line, you know, the prepackaged salad or whatever it is, on the cold side. And then, or the hot serving line, which is more similar to what it is now. It'll just be a little bit more efficient, you know, built to specifically what we need for, for hot servings. So the line will be a little bit shorter than it is currently, more efficient. It's shown in white, and I'll, maybe switch to the next slide here. It's shown in white, but they're really not gonna be white. You know, there'll be a combination of the stainless and, and different materials like we have at the high school. But in the serving area, it's currently that luxury vinyl tile, which is, is not really recommended for kitchens and serving areas. So this will be moving towards tile. This is more of a wood finish tile. You know, and creating a new solid back wall, accent wall, with just a darker blue tile. And then we do intend to not have a white tile on the side walls of the serving area. It's gonna be more of a vinyl imagery. You know, kind of trying to bring the outdoors in, like apple orchard, you know, kind of those outdoors, and bringing them in on your side versus just straight up tiling, tiling the wall with this textured tile. And then redoing the lighting in that area, providing a little bit better lighting within that space. So the existing serving space at Columbia Academy is, is what you see here. And, and we're bumping out into the cafeteria a little bit to create this, these cold serving areas. But currently, that's not, it's not gonna eat into any of the seating within the space. So it'll still be able to seat the exact same amount of kids it is seating now. It's just eating into that space just a little bit there. And of course, instead of a central awning, it says Central Cafe, that's been removed, and it's just a solid surface, full awning of the space that says Columbia Cafe. And the cages that are, that are showing on this picture are really necessary, because this, this is part of the kitchen, the serving area. And it really does need to be secured from the cafeteria when there's after-school or before-school activities that don't include serving food, when the kitchen staff aren't available. So it really should be secured from, from that space. So as we move forward with these projects, that's what we'll be looking to do. That is the standard of, of, because you are really connected to that kitchen. So we, we, the board approved the bids. We're going out to post for ad, and the lowest responsible bidder for this project was Construction Results Corporation with a base bid of five hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. And we had an alternative bid of some work in the, in the dish room and the dish machine, and that was eighty-two thousand four ninety-four. We, the recommendation, and we agree with the recommendation from, from ATSRR, is that we approve the base bid with, the lowest responsible bidder of Construction Results Corporation, and we, and we do not move forward with the alternative bid of eighty-two thousand four ninety-four in that dish room work. And we hold off on that, as we feel like we're, we're getting towards the top of, you know, our allowed funding within the food service program for this, this project, for this coming June. And we do feel like we can get a, a better price with that other work later down the road. So, as I said, the school board approved the bid for authorization. It was December thirteenth. District received no bids, these bids on January fifth. January tenth is this evening, we're making a recommendation as an information item to move forward with that base bid with Construction Results. And January twenty-fourth, we'll be bringing this as a recommendation of action. And then pending the school board approval, we begin work in June, and, and we're pushing them really hard for a tight start and complete. We really want this project to be completed in this fiscal year. And those expenses to stay, come out of the food service fund in this fiscal year. That is it.
Great. Any questions?
Not a question, because I'm sure you're gonna cover that, because this is definitely your wheelhouse. But I just want to say how excited I am for this. Because, and y'all will be excited when your kids get there, because we've lived through this, and it's like, it's,
I'm like, oh.
I'm so excited. Yeah, this is so fantastic. It looks really great. So thank you so much for your hard work with that, and.
And we, and we have our middle school teacher in the audience.
See, look, see, like, we were all making the same faces.
Director Hennigan's, can you just share, so that our new board members have, you said that we've got the food service, that this will come out of the food service fund. That will fully cover this project. And that that's food service fund cannot be used for, like, improvements to the greater cafeteria, or can't be used to pay down student lunch debt, or anything, that this is what it's designed for, and that this, the five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars would be covered by that fund?
Yes. Yeah, the, the food service fund is, is very specific. And there's a lot of constraints around that funding, and it's, it's there to feed the kids. And, and, you know, that kitchen and serving area, and the staffing that work in that space are there to feed those kids. And the cafeteria spaces, you know, they're just more general. And, and they just don't, they, they, I'm not saying that districts don't find ways, maybe to, to do things outside of that, but there are, they're very, they're very tight funds, tight rules around those funds. And in student lunch debt, you would think that it would really fit into that, but it doesn't. So when it all comes down to it, the general fund needs to pick up all of those other things, so. Which is, is not, is not where we have the healthy fund balance right now. So we did get a lot of bidders. So we do feel very confident in the pricing that we received, as far as what the market is saying right now. It is a little bit higher than what we anticipated. And we did reach out to the lowest responsible bidder and, and work with them a little bit on the breakdown of, of where that fun, where that additional costs were coming from. So we feel, we definitely feel comfortable with that. And, and we do definitely have the available resources in that fund balance to move forward with this project and still have a healthy fund balance after.
Great. Thank you very much. Jessica?
That just spurred a question for me, then. Where does that leave our fund balance then, after this expenditure for the food service balance?
So that, yeah, the food service fund balance is, it exceeds what's allowable, so that's one of those, those funds that can only carry a certain percent fund balance to, to, to what your expenses are. And off the top of my head, I can't give you that number. But we did increase that fund balance, and we were sitting at a, over a million-dollar fund balance in our food service program. And which it's about double of what is allowed fund balance, based on our expenditures. So we're looking at taking that fund balance down to the mark of what's allowed within the fund balance policy with, with food service fund too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Director Hennigan's. We'll get to see a little bit more of you here for the next three items, which we'll move on to our action items. The first is the Northeast State Bank Corporate Authorization Resolution.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. The first action item here is the Northeast Bank Corporate Authorizing Resolution. And this evening, recommending approving that Northeast Bank authorizing resolution. This updates the signatories for Northeast Bank, which is our primary bank that we use, as the board member roles change. So as, there's four key people, as they change, we need to update this. And it's the treasurer of the board, the clerk of the board, the superintendent, or the finance director. And so if any of those people change, then this authorizing resolution needs to come before the board to change those names and those signatories on our accounts. And we do have two accounts. So this authorizing resolution will give the authority to update those documentation, those documents and signatures.
Thank you. So just a couple of items to note with this. So this is a resolution. Resolutions will require roll call vote. So as, when we get ready to vote, Mary will call the roll. Other votes that are not resolutions, we can just do the aye and whatnot, like we've been doing in the past. Resolutions also are read, which we're gonna work on that, too. Don, do, this is a kind of an interesting resolution. Do you, do I read all, all of these things?
No.
Do you know?
Start with the corporation name on this resolution, resolve that.
Perfect. Great. So just those items. Okay. So I'm gonna read the resolution, and then we'll ask for a motion to move that forward. So, "The corporation named on this resolution resolves that, one, the financial institution is designated as a depository for the funds of the corporation and to provide other financial accommodations indicated in this resolution. Two, the resolution shall continue to have effect until express written notice of its rescission or modification has been received and recorded by the financial institution. Any and all prior resolutions adopted by the Board of Directors of the corporation certified to the financial institution as governing the operation of this corporation's accounts are in full force and effect until the financial institution receives and acknowledges an express written notice of its revocation, modification, or replacement. Any revocation, modification, or replacement of a resolution must be accompanied by documentation satisfactory to the financial institution establishing the authority for the changes. Three, the signature of an agent on this resolution is conclusive evidence of their authority to act on behalf of the corporation. Any agent, so long as they act in a representative capacity as an agent of the corporation, is authorized to make any and all other contracts, agreements, stipulations, and orders which they may deem advisable for the effective exercise of the powers indicated in this resolution from time to time with the financial institution, subject to any restrictions on this resolution or otherwise agreed in writing. Four, all transactions, if any, with respect to any deposits, withdrawals, rediscounts, or borrowing by or on behalf of the corporation with the financial institution prior to the adoption of this resolution are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed. The corporation agrees to the terms and conditions of any account agreement properly opened by any agent of the corporation. The corporation authorizes the financial institution at any time to charge the corporation for all checks, drafts, and other orders for the payment of money that are drawn on the financial institution, so long as they contain the required number of signatures for this purpose. Six, the corporation acknowledges and agrees that the financial institution may furnish at its discretion automated access devices to the agents of the corporation to facilitate those powers authorized by this resolution or other resolutions in effect at the time of issuance. The term automated access device includes, but is not limited to, credit cards, automated teller machines, ATM, and debit cards. The corporation, seven, the corporation acknowledges and agrees that the financial institution may rely on alternative signature and verification codes issued to or obtained from the agent named on this resolution. The term alternative signature and verification codes includes, but is not limited to, facsimile signatures on file with the financial institution, personal identification numbers, and digital signatures. If a facsimile signature specimen has been provided on this resolution or that are filed separately by the corporation with the financial institution from time to time, on this, the financial institution is authorized to treat facsimile signature as a signature of the agents regardless of by whom or by what means the facsimile signature may have been affixed, so long as it resembles facsimile signature specimen on file. The corporation authorizes each agent to have a custody, to have custody of the corporation's private key used to create digital signature and to request issuance of a certificate listing the corresponding public key. The financial institution shall have no responsibility or liability for unauthorized use of the alternative signature and verification codes unless otherwise agreed in writing." There we go. Leave that.
Good job.
Killed it. That, my friends, is why you run for chair. All right, can I get a motion to move that resolution forward?
So moved.
Michelle, in a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. Mary, can you do the roll, please?
Yep. Maderis?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Whoel?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Granlin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you, Director Hennigan's. We have our next U.S. Bank authorizing resolution.
So, almost identical to the previous. The, we're, we're seeking approval for the attached resolution in the board pack, U.S. Bank authorizing resolution. And again, it's the same, same reason. We have U.S. Bank is, we use and work with for direct deposits. And, and the reason that we don't work with Northeast Bank on direct deposits, kind of has a historical where, when we were with ties, wasn't something that was, was available to us at the time. Now that it is available, we looked at a price comparison of, of processing those direct deposits. And it was significantly more cost-effective for us to stay exactly where we were. We know the process. We understand it well, and it's, it's very easy, so it's not labor-intensive. So this evening, as our treasurer is updated, we're seeking authors, board, to approve this authorizing resolution.
Great. Thank you. Just like the other, I'll read this resolution, and then we'll do a motion.
Can I make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
So there's a motion to waive the reading of the resolution. Don, are we able to do that? Okay. And the resolution is available on Board Book, should people want to see that. We've got a motion to waive the reading of the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Michelle. Don, we vote on that then, correct? Yep. You know, so there's a motion to waive the reading by Laura, seconded by Michelle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Motion carries. Thank you all. So again, that resolution is available on Board Book. So knowing that, can I get a motion to approve the resolution for authorizing, the authorization resolution for U.S. Bank?
So moved.
Motion by Mary, in a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? All right. Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. Mary, if you call the roll.
Yep. Maderis?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Whoel?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Granlin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you all. Double aye, thank you. Next, we have, again, Director Hennigan's to talk about the Valley View, or the Elementary Roof Bid.
Thank you, Chair, Super, our Chair, Laura Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. The last item I have is the Valley View Roof Bid Project. And I want to quickly share my screen here. And usually for an action item, I don't have a formal presentation, but because some of the board members are new to this conversation, as this information item came before the new year, I just wanted to kind of review it. So we had Columbia Heights Highland and Valley View Elementary Roof Bid that went out last fall. And our first, I'll start with the mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, with our core values of community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, aligning with the board's equity statement. So we had Highland Elementary that we were looking at. So we had a roof study done for, I think, four years ago. And looked at roofs across the district, and looks at roofs that are in immediate need of replacement. And then roofs that, or sections that could be just kind of reclaimed and worked with down the road, and not a complete replacement. And, and so over the last four years, we've been focusing on getting those roofs replaced. We've spent a large amount of our long-term facility maintenance dollars specifically on roofs. And so this- And so this year, we were hoping to do Highland Elementary. It's this section, section A. And then um Valley View Elementary, and it's the section above the gym and then the, the section B here. And uh which is above the cafeteria. And uh um through the, the bid process, um the bids came in uh as a package deal too high uh for us to look at for this year, so we were going to have to split them. And so the recommendation is to move forward with Valley View Elementary for this year. So um Peterson Brothers was the lowest responsible bidder. Um that was presented at the previous work meeting with a, a base bid line item. It's number two uh for Valley View, which is three hundred and eighty-four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. So the base, base bid line item number one was Highland Section, the four hundred seventy-five, four hundred. So this was the timeline here, just for a review. October twenty-fifth was bid authorization, November fifteenth, um we received an open bids. December thirteenth was the recommendation at the information item to move forward with line item, base bid line item number two for Valley View Elementary. And then January tenth, uh school board recommendation action. And uh, and then we would begin this project actually not until uh July twenty-twenty-three. And it, project would, would be complete or substantially complete by August twenty-twenty-three, or in August twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Director Hennickens. Um since this is an action item and not an informational item, I'm going to ask for a motion and a second to move this forward, and then we'll do discussion and um have any availability for questions. So can I get a motion to move um for the approval of the Valley View Roof Project as presented?
So moved.
Uh Jessica, in a second.
Second.
Second by Julie. Um any discussion?
I have a question. Director Hennickens, um so obviously this is six months out that they're going to be working on it. Do we have any clauses in our contract or bid that would allow for maybe a reduction in that price? If prices go down or, I mean, because they always want to charge us more. You know, like, oh, it's been six months and interest rates are high or whatever. Um I'm just asking, is there anything that, that we can get, have wiggle room on?
No, uh this is, this is the um a bid-out project and, and this is what they're bidding on it. Um and uh, so I mean, kind of in that sense, works both ways. But if we really wanted to um hold off and try to hope for better pricing six months down the road, we would have to throw uh the whole thing out uh like we did for our HVAC project. Just decline all bids um and then go out and rebid it.
Okay.
And um it, at this time, we, 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 we did consider that. And, and, and that's when we looked at it as a big picture of Highland and Valley View. And you could see that Valley or Highland's price was bigger. Um as far as the base bid line item number one was, was much larger than um base bin line item number two. And we, we looked at the differences between the two. Um and we work with Garland Company uh for um putting the scope of work together for these projects. They work, we work with them on the um, the comprehensive roof study. And uh um, and their recommendation was to move that, you know, base bid number, line item number two with Valley View was, was much more aligned with projected pricing than line item number one was. And there was some varying factors that made those roofs different. And we, and based on the funding that we have for long-term facility maintenance, recommending moving forward with that one versus the whole package.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Before we vote, no?
Um I've, I've got one. Um just um an item of note. So I will be abstaining from this vote, um and I want to share that with you during the discussion here. Um because of what I do for a living professionally, um I often will make sure Director Hennickens knows that I get information on any of the potential bidders or all of the bidders for a project to make sure I don't have a professional conflict of interest or a perception of conflict of interest. Um this is the first time in six years um that I have a professional relationship with one of the bidders. Not the bidder that is um, we're looking to award this contract to, but one of the other bidders. Um and so just in complete um transparency, um I think it's best if I abstain from this bid. I have no issue with this contractor, with this bidder, with this project. Um I just, again, because of what I do for a living in asset management, I do have a relationship with one of the bidders on this project.
Appreciate it.
Um any other um discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstain? And I abstain. Motion carries.
Now.
Thank you.
I have a question related. Um is this the, can you please remind me? Um is this the first time that the roofs have been um replaced since the buildings were built?
No.
Okay.
Uh they, the roofs that we're replacing now um ranged in age, the ones that we've done over the last four years, from the mid-eighties uh to the early nineties.
Okay.
Um so they've, they've uh, they've lasted a while, but yes, they're not, they're not original.
Okay.
Um the current roofs that we're putting in have a forty, forty-year warranty. So um properly maintained, we anticipate that these will last for forty years. The ones that are currently replacing, the ones that were put out in the eighties and nineties, um had a thirty-year warranty.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um next, we'll move to board topics. Um so board topics is an area where if a member of the board, you have something you'd like to bring up or discuss or announce to the group. Since we can't conduct business with each other outside of board meetings, this is a time that we can have those discussions of things that aren't necessarily on the agenda. Does anybody have any board topics? Jessica.
I have a board topic related to um the member appointments and just thinking about the different liaison um appointments and how we get connected with those groups. And so I don't know if there's a particular process um for that. It probably varies by appointment and what the group is, but I just wanted to, to raise that here.
Yeah, absolutely. Um I'll start, and then Superintendent Stenbeck or Dawn can chime in as well. Um with a lot of those appointments for um the, like, the school liaison, you just kind of go and show up and you might want to talk to Superintendent Stenbeck about, you know, having a conversation with the principal. Um for other organizations like the Columbia Heights Business Council, um AMSD, um the Metro XU, some of those, Dawn usually um communicates to those organizations who the new liaison is for Columbia Heights and then links you to that organization. So I get, did I miss, did I get that right, Dawn?
Yep. And uh for the school appointments, um Dawn and I did communicate to the principals who their person is. And then um so via email, an email, using your board email to the principal and make that connection. And then they can send you different opportunities to come and visit. And um the offer or the, they're seeking support with a lot of different events. Um and so a few months ago, we, we discussed this at the board table. So for example, um North Park Barbecue or Valley View Carnival um is a great opportunity for board members and that liaison, not only to go and meet and greet, but they'd appreciate help serving food or um I'm running some of the games at the carnival, so come and help out.
Great. And I think too, if you're a liaison to a city, um it's appropriate for you to reach out to the mayor of that a city, of that city, like elected official to elected official, to make an introduction um or to go to a, a city council meeting and introduce yourself as, as the liaison. So um if you have any questions about your liaison um appointment or how to get connected, or if you're not sure who to contact, um reach out to Superintendent Stenbeck and to Dawn, and they will help navigate that for you.
Thank you.
Yep. Excellent. Jessica, thank you for bringing that up. Any other board topics? I have one. Um and just a reminder that we have our work session next week, and part of that is our book study. Um so again, we're discussing chapters one through four of Street Data, so prepared for that. Anything else? Any other others?
Yes, I have one. Um council member Spriggs reached out, um and I didn't add that to my um opening because again, you know, we're all starting. It's January. And he had let me know that he was the liaison for the school or from the city council to the school district. So he was um reaching out just to let me know and to wonder who to contact. So I had provided him with that information to um start with. Both of you, so.
Yeah, you. Perfect. Good. Anything else? All right.
I actually do have a question. Did we ever decide which organization we were going to do for nationals?
We were not going to do one this year because of the budget constraints.
Yep.
Okay.
So we weren't doing any national conferences this year.
Well, I, I just wasn't sure if we were going to associate with one or the other.
Yeah, we, we didn't make that decision because we decided not to um, to travel um in relation to budget issues.
Yeah, that was a roller coaster at my house, because we were, I was really excited to be able to travel, and then we weren't, so, yeah. And that's okay.
Great. Any, any other topics? All right. Um I will adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-six.